Because we've got a, got a pretty thick schedule. Um, I, I went around with Bert, had a chance to go with Bert and just kind of look at the things that he does during the week, during the day, during the week, and the projects. And one of the most interesting things that, to me, is the storm drainage. We blew up a dam and, you know, it, the creek dropped like three or four feet almost instantly. And then we found another dam and so now we're in the process of hunting beaver, trapping beaver, they're building those dams. It might not fix everything downtown, but you know, you can have the greatest pipes in the world, take you to a ditch with a dam and it isn't going to drain. So, I think that working there back is probably a good way to do that. One of the things that I observed, you know, Bert asked for two vehicles in his budget and we didn't fund it. But if you look at the equipment that he has, we're in a bad place, got a lot of old equipment. We, when we ran the pipe for Harbor Freight twenty years ago, which I can't believe it was that long, we bought a brand new Tracko at that time. Well, that's twenty years old now. But we've got a lot of capital equipment that, or capital investment that we're going to have to make in that department. So, you know, we, I don't think we funded it in the budget, but we need to look hard at, it's starting to replenish some of the vehicles in that department. Another thing that I was looking at, the, total revenues are still down as I looked at the budget, a hundred and thirteen thousand for the year. Is that correct?
Um, we haven't received all our revenues in them.
Okay.
We've still got taxes to come in.
And that will appear on?
That appears on, you know.
It'll, it will appear?
When we enter audit.
Do on the audit. Okay.
Yeah.
Our liability insurance went up forty-four thousand dollars.
I don't know exactly what it's going to be until it comes, they can't tell me, it's going five, six, seven percent it's going to.
Why, we had a big loss or?
Now, that's the one we're in a pool with?
Yes, we're in a pool, yeah.
And the other thing, you know, we had budgeted, and all I can tell you is the line item is twenty-four point zero zero four one four.
What page?
Huh?
What page are you on?
That's why I said twenty-four point zero zero.
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Yeah.
And we had budgeted fifteen thousand and we spent sixty-five thousand.
We had to put a motor and a knuckle bone, which is around thirty thousand.
Okay, that, that's yours.
Okay.
It just, it just looked like we had a lot of total revenue deficits, total expense were, were high. Um, other than that, I don't know. I think the police in the county and everyone involved, police officers, everything went off well this weekend, which is a blessing and we're thankful. We want to thank them for all their efforts. Sometimes just having those people out there, let them know that, you know, we just want this to be a good time and nothing more. And I think that's what happened. Got the Little League baseball.
No, I don't use that word. Dixie youth.
Words are so hurt.
I know it.
Dixie youth, Little League, alright. Dixie youth baseball, this, this, starting this Friday. We're going to come back and vacation, welcome them. The, but that's, that's alright. Um, I don't have very much more. Glenn, you last time gave me a cheat sheet, you didn't give me one this time.
You got on job for a month.
Yeah. Seek or swim. But that's all I have.
Alright, well, let me follow up if I may on the storm drainage we're talking about. Make everyone aware that.
We're talking about the issues of the big canals we have off Three O One South. And the state has come in and we didn't blow it up, did we?
No, we hired contractors by the state.
The state did that and they hired, they had someone on contract who trapped beavers. So, that's something that they handle. Now with that, we were working last week over off of Dogwood and Cottonwood area where everything from Virginia Lane and Laurel Lane drains to. And we were in their video and, and we now have our video camera working and we getting to see what we've done. And we're getting to see what it looks like before we clean it, now we're seeing what it looks like after we clean it. And what we cleaned so far is, is clean. However, in this portion of where we were cleaning, the pipe is damaged. In fact, you got a sinkhole in the road, just that, is that a concrete pipe? Concrete pipe has come apart undoubtedly and when it rains, it finds a place and it sucks the dirt above it into the pipe.
That's not the first time that's happened.
No, that one's happened two or three times in that area. And the state is going to replace that at some point to fix that. But as we go in and clean, we're going to find these things. Did that obstruct or it just, is that part of the obstruction?
No, the obstruction was root balls. And, and, and you probably don't know if the rest of us ever seen it, but when y'all, when they.
Originally got that.
Well, when you do a, a hard cap, you know, basically you see all these things going through there and as we go through these pipes with the camera and you got these root balls and roots crisscrossing and things of that nature, that creates the, the issue. I mean, that's the blockage the most part. And Burton had worked hard to clean that area and it's not something you just go in and spend an hour at. You've got to spend eight, ten hours just to get it clean and go back and, you know, video it and then go back again if you need to. So, we're moving along, it is a slow process, but we're moving along and able to see some things and hopefully that problem will be corrected when the state fixes it, where the pipe is starting to collapse. And then we move on to another section and keep on going. But I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. The state blew up the dam or their contractor did and they're also the ones who are trapping the beavers. In your packet I submitted to you, which is on the agenda and we'll, we'll talk about it when it comes up under new business, but I wanted to go over the A-Tax Distribution list that the A-Tax Committee met last Friday. And you should have a copy of that, what they recommended. And then again, you'll vote on it under new business. But real quickly, the pop-up farmer's market is requesting twenty-five hundred dollars for marketing purposes. That's something, the pop-up market, farmer's market's been going on now, I think it's in its second year down at the Santa Plaza on Railroad Avenue. Every second Monday of the month, their next one is scheduled for this coming Monday. Dillon County Theater has requested twenty thousand and asked for paying for performances, marketing and some building maintenance. PD Tourism is an agency through South Carolina PRT who does advertising and marketing for all the PD cities and counties, which has requested five thousand. The JW Dillon House has requested thirty-eight hundred dollars. And then Partial Recreation has requested ten thousand to help with the state baseball tournament that starts this weekend. And then I think I mentioned in the letter how this tax is collected and the law and how it's dispersed and how it can be dispersed. But those are going to be the recommendations from that committee and like I said, that's on the new business to talk about. Upcoming events, you spoke about the state championship for Dixie Youth Baseball estimating four hundred players and coaches, roughly twenty-four teens, ages seven and eight and eleven to twelve-year-olds. We're probably looking at anywhere from twenty-five hundred to three thousand people during the week that will come in to watch these kids play. Our offices will be closed on Thursday for July fourth. Residential garbage pickup that is scheduled for the fourth is, will be picked up on Friday, July fifth. Last week, the folks put hangers on the garbage roll cart, so folks will know, we put it in the newspaper and also on our Facebook page to let everyone know about that. Special election for District Five seat is going to be held August twenty-seventh. The filing closed on Monday, June twenty-fourth. There were two candidates that applied, Mr. Jay David and Mr. Steve Johnson. And the facade grants for this year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, there were eight grants that were requested and awarded. Only four grants were completed. G.G. and Doc's requested three thousand dollars, they did three thousand dollars worth and got their money. Steve Johnson's building on Main Street requested three thousand, ended up getting twenty-eight hundred dollars. Steve Johnson's building on MacArthur Avenue ended up getting five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And then the building on Main Street with Angie's Floors or was, was reimbursed nineteen hundred dollars. That's nowhere close to twenty-four thousand dollars that we budgeted. Quick numbers, seven, eight, less than ten thousand dollars that we reimbursed. We had four projects that never got off the ground that were awarded.
We still funded that in our budget?
Yes, we, we still did that in our budget. But we had four projects that were, that were given the grant, but they didn't do anything. One of them started, that was the pond shop and he ran into some trouble and once he started working, he had to bring in some folks to raise his building at the front, it was sinking.
Yes, sir.
And just, they still working on, so they meet the timeline on that one. And if they'd have applied this coming year, I think we should give it to them because they did try. There's two that has applied two years in a row and never did, did anything. So, I don't think if they apply this year, we should entertain giving them a grant. But I wanted to update you on that. And then the upfit grants, as we have talked before, this year, both of them have done what they were supposed to do, but we did not fund upfit grants in this new budget year. And then maybe the next year we can do one or two if needed.
Um, I think that's all I have at this point.
What about the money that's not used, can it roll over?
It won't roll over because I mean, it goes away when the, when the year ended on That's all I have at this point in time.
Jim?
Okay. I'm just going to give you the general fund and water sewer highlights. In our general fund cash accounts with appreciation, we've got two million thirty-two thousand, thirty-five dollars. In the stormwater account, we have a hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. Our revenues in two thousand and nineteen versus two thousand and eighteen, we have got a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and twelve thousand less in nineteen than we have in eighteen and that's due, we have not received all our revenues. It will still come in. And then in our expenditures.
That's the general fund too?
No, this general fund, general fund.
What's expected to come in?
Well, we haven't got our local option, sales tax come in yet and some other, you know, taxes and stuff that come in. Plus you've got your court fines that have come in, that I have to record for the audit. When they come in in July, we, I'll do the general entries for Jim.
When you typically balance, when you typically balance your book outside of the audit, do we do that personally, you know, do we do it ourselves or?
I do all the general entries and give them to Smith and then he puts them in the audit and then that's when we have our final numbers. On the expense side, we have spent, let me see, we have two hundred and, let me see, we've got two hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty, um, let me see, one second, I'm trying to see what I've got in there. We've got two hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty more expenses in two thousand and nineteen than we had in eighteen. And we still have not received all our invoices and stuff that come in, that we record.
Any big items that have come in that?
Well, that was due to some demolition, stormwater, vehicle payment that we had, insurance, retirement, stuff like that that had increased in nineteen that we didn't have in eighteen. In our water and sewer, on our non-restrict, restricted cash accounts, we've got a million six hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. In our restricted account, we've got a million seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars. A total of both accounts, three million, four hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. Okay.
How much do we grow in the restricted?
On restricted, we put in what, about, let's see, about thirteen thousand, some of mine.
And what is Purdue?
That's with Purdue and the city, what the city and Purdue puts in. And there, okay, so, we've got, we've got more revenues in two thousand and nineteen in the water and sewer than we had in eighteen by eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Our expenses, we have a difference of five hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars more in eighteen than we had in nineteen.
That was that plus that, plus that pile of.
So, that, that's my report, general fund and water and sewer.
Alright, thank you.
The golf course, let me ask you about the golf course. You normally hit on the golf course. You take, so when you go into hospitality, you're taking and putting it on the revenue side. Shouldn't that be on the expense side? When you take, like you're taking a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and putting it in the golf course fund. And you're showing that you're putting that, when you're taking that to hospitality, you're putting it in the revenue.
That's right.
Why is that?
Because it's, it's funds we've taken from one account to the other.
But that's an expense.
Well, you'll see the expense on down in there.
It's expense out of the tax.
And then the fifty thousand dollars that the county gives us, you do the same thing.
Yeah, that should show in the revenue side.
But the hospitality shouldn't show on the revenue side, it's, it's an expense you're doing out of our own fund.
But when you're putting, putting it in the golf course is a revenue.
When you take it out of, of the two percent, it's an expense. It's the expense in that, or a transfer is what it is, actually a transfer.
You're transferring it over to the golf course.
Right, to use those funds.
It's an expense on the hospitality side, yeah, yeah. And you see that in, on the hospitality printout.
Transferred to golf.
Yeah. You would see that on the hospitality printout, you got revenues at the top and then you got expenses and it shows transferred to golf course.
So, if I'm looking at that, a hundred and thirty-five thousand and the fifty thousand, and now you got a balance of five thousand, that means we, we spent over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars deficit in the golf course this year. Am I reading right?
You may be, let's see. We brought in three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, and I'm using rough numbers. And of that, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, fifty thousand, a hundred and thirty-five thousand, which is a hundred and eighty-five thousand.
But you got a five thousand dollar balance. As you're taking some out of hospitality that you didn't use.
That hundred and eighty-five is roughly half of what our revenue is in, in the golf, which, well, we're just going to use round numbers, again, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we collected. From, from usage, from fees. And then we spent three hundred and sixty-six thousand, so you have about a hundred and eighty thousand, give or take.
What, um, this might not be a number you put your hand on right away, is what is our balance in the hospitality tax relatively to what it was last year?
Well, you can, yes you can. At the beginning of the year, our beginning balance was eight hundred and six thousand dollars, almost eight hundred and seven thousand. Our current fund balance is eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, so about sixty thousand more.
Yeah, but we made that one hundred, two hundred and thirty thousand dollar payment in February.
That's correct. And you can see that on your report at the end, it'll give you a beginning balance and then it'll give you year-to-day revenues and year-to-day expenses and then the current fund balance. You can see where we started on July first and where we ended on June thirtieth.
But if you look at that, it, it basically is a staggering number because you're taking money out every other month or every two or three months. So, if you look at it, you budgeted five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, you're taking in six hundred and one thousand, okay? With our payment with the mortgage, with the wellness center, the money we had to take out for the hospitality fund, and the money that we lost in the wellness center this year, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The six hundred thousand we did get, we really had broke even, we didn't make any.
There were about sixty thousand dollars.
So, if you had to take all that money at one time instead of staggering, that wouldn't be a true number.
Well, you wouldn't, you know, you couldn't take all of it.
But I'm just saying, if you did, eight hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars is not really a true number.
Why isn't it a true number? That's what we had in mind.
Well, over the course of the years, you, you, you know, you're not taking it all out at one time.
No.
I mean, you take, for example, this year, I just gave you three examples and how much money you're taking in. You really, you roughly broke even. So, we're not, we're not really, what I'm saying is, I don't think we're managing. We, we can manage better with our wellness center and with the golf course, to where we can show some kind of revenue with our hospitality. We're not really having money with hospitality. We're talking about a golf course, we wanted to put a golf course at the wellness center one time. Do we not?
Swimming pool.
I mean, swimming pool, excuse me, swimming pool at the wellness center.
Uh, you couldn't do that with this money.
But I'm just saying, the money that we spent in the golf course, we could have bought the golf course and we could have put a swimming pool at the wellness center, but we got neither one, we got anything to show for. And I don't harp on the golf course no more, but I just think we need to reevaluate and relook at what we're, we got, in nine months, we got to bug in for the lease on the golf course.
Yep, it expires this time next year.
We, we need to look at it, ultimately, and find out what we need to do. I understand the Red Cross goes out there and other different charities, but they did that before. I just think the city needs to bail out. And that's all I'm going to say. I don't want to get into a big old discussion matter or any, but I just wanted to make that reference. We're not making any money with our hospitality, we got potential to do that.
I put in, and I couldn't find it, I think I put in your packet some information where I found a article talking about water and sewer infrastructure and just something for you to, it's just not in Dillon that happens, it's happening not just statewide, but nationally.
You read the article, I read through it and it really paints a picture that, you know, some of the small communities just don't have a clue and, and they, they talk about not knowing where the pipes are and all these different, we, we've got a good idea of what our problems are. A lot more than, than most. I think we're, we're ahead of the game, um, yeah.
But I just wanted you to be aware and see that.
We're not alone, right?
Yeah, we're, we're not. And, you know, the, the state and the federal government do have funds that we have utilized over the years. The rural infrastructure, RIA, as we call it, has been a big help for us along with the CDVG grants that we get. But the RIA is a lot more flexible. Although in fact, we're working on some projects now to, to get some RIA money for. And it's, and this one, basically already, we're going to look at refurbishing two water tanks.
Two water tanks.
One on racetrack, one out there at the racetrack and one here in town on Twentieth Avenue.
I think what, you know, they talked about regionalization and splitting assets and that type of thing and, and people not wanting to do that. I tell you where you could do some regionalization is with your engineering costs. I just feel like we just, you know, for as long as I've been on this, we just pay a huge amount to those engineers.
Costs.
And you know, when we built this nice water tank and whoops, it's too short. And I don't want to harp on money, but you know, it, um, that's what you're paying the big money for.
That is correct.
My question to you, Dr. Williams, is are we still using the engineering firm that we had a problem with?
At this point, yeah, at this point, we still are.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, sorry.
Now we got Clay Young from the Dillon County Economic Development Director. And Clay's a great friend, he's done, he's done a great job for Dillon and we've talked numerous times. I can tell you all about Clay and, you know, anyway, I'm just, I'm just going to let Clay talk.
Thank you, I appreciate you all. City let me come and speak tonight and I always, always tell Glenn this, is that I don't know of any better partner I could have in economic development. Since, since I came here in two thousand and one years ago, every time I came over to the city and asked them to help participate in economic development with economic development ideas and especially with the, with the sewer aspect of, y'all been a great partner. I hear a lot of stories throughout the state and I, I just say, well, I've got a great city to work with, so I'm, I'm very thankful for that, from that part there. I, you know, we, we've been very busy, this, you know, I've been here since February and we've been extremely busy. We've had three announcements so far, which is, which is pretty good for, for us. We've had a project, what we call Project Stone, which is a Lada Court project down there in Lada, which is the old Rock Ten building. They committed Purdue, of course, that did this expansion to here. We've got Project Move, which is going out here by Harbor Freight, is where you take the entrance road coming in, they, they've, they're going to acquire ninety acres there and do their project. Those three projects are already now. Harbor Freight is up and running, you know, we feel like that with their expansion, we feel like they're up and running too. I, I like to kind of throw them in here so that can make my fourth project on that too. We've got three other projects, we're very close, we feel we're very close, two, at least two out of three, they, with the code names of Craft, Betty and Snowflake. I didn't come up with those names. Those are names that came from colliers, so I don't know how they come up with any. But we're pretty close on two of those, those should be fairly substantial projects, so we feel like that, that would give us five for the year. We're hoping, it's being early in the year, we're hoping we can do better than that. We now December, we hope, we were closing on a couple of projects. We've been meeting a lot with the South Carolina Port Authority. I think now, I think there's, there's some opportunities for them, after sitting down with them the last couple of weeks, we feel like there's some opportunities that we, we can, we can team up with them. We did do what we did, and, and the prior job I had before coming back here at the PD Council of Governments, we did do, we, I wrote a grant for the South Carolina Port Authority and the, basically the region. And that project was funded by EDA, it's a two hundred thousand dollar study project. It's tied in with the South Carolina Port Authority to basically come up with a master plan and study for the port authority, identifying targeting industry, identifying property owners, identifying the water and sewer needs, which Glenn and I talked a little bit about that, and, and identifying what industries we think we can be successful with the port and port activities. Since we've announced that study, that EDA announced it back last December, January, we, we're now starting to even get some inquiries about that. So, we feel like once we get the study done. We're also going to look at another statewide perspective on that study, which will basically identify the impact of what the port is going to do to this part of this, this part of the state, this part of the region, and then also from a statewide perspective, we feel like that this, this impact here is going to be as big as Greer or not bigger. So, we feel like that we need to address that aspect through this study here too. We are doing a water and sewer study with, with the city of Dillon's help on matching that. We did get an EDA grant of eighty thousand with a twenty thousand dollar match. Handy Engineering did get, did get that project there to, to do the study. They've already, as I understand it, they've already signed the contract, they're working on this project there. It's a county-wide water and sewer study, so it's not just dealing, just with the city, of course, it's dealing with Lakeview Lada and of course, the city of Dillon and looking at the water and sewer and with Trico Water Company to see what areas do we need to prove in, where do we need, where the potential areas that we, that the growth areas are coming, you know, should we look at, where should we go with water and sewer in the future, you know, what, what cost is going to be associated with it. I hope to get from the study is the cost aspects of sitting down and saying, if we go here, this is what it's going to cost, if we go here, it's what it's going to cost, and then going back into the state and finding out what, you know, funds are available from that standpoint there too. And then we'll also look with our industry partners to see how they can team up, possibly team up with us in the future on that, that aspect there too. Going back to the water and going back to the port though, I think the port thing is going to be an impact to us, to all of us especially. It's going to identify. Uh, it's gonna identify the roads, it's gonna identify potential sites, it's gonna identify the water and sewer, it's gonna identify the zoning, it's gonna look at all the different aspects that are coming in there. Do we need to improve the interstate? If we do, how do we need to do that? Do we just, you know, do we look at building another intersection out there? Do we look at other aspects of that? We're definitely gonna look at putting in another road possibly from Fairfield Road over to, to Bothell Road because of the proximity to safety in that aspect of the port. So, um, I feel like this project here will enable us to basically get more on everybody's radar. I, really, the last two weeks, the last three or four weeks, I'm meeting with two projects tomorrow, but we've had about nine projects actually in the last two, three weeks, just look at Dillon County. That's a lot. That's a lot. If we, we are so far with the five projects we've got so far, and I feel like we'll get this year. I keep looking at Betsy.
I know Betsy giving you information.
Betsy does all the magic, she's helping me, she's helping me put the story together. But, um, I think, you know, like I said, we've got an opportunity to get five or six or seven projects this year. Uh, if we keep growing at the rate that I think we could grow at, uh, you know, we're definitely gonna have some, you know, some water and sewer challenges we're gonna have to overcome. And we're gonna have to look and see if things have wasted. Yeah, we need to stay ahead of that as much as we can. I know Phil and I've talked about, we need to, we need to start pre-planning for that growth that's coming. We need to be able to sit, you know, get on the, what I call the offensive approach, instead of just waiting. We need to figure out what we need to do for the future on that part there too.
Prices, you know, prices.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I'll, I'll throw in Trico, Trico's been a good, good player, good partner for me too. They've always come to the table, every time I needed them, come to the table, like, you know, and that too. Um, we've got a number of different projects that we're also working on. I got two NISA grants funded this year, which is good. We normally get one, but they, they've submitted another one. We've got two NISA grants that, um, we're gonna redo our website, we're gonna redo our marketing material. We feel like we need to rebrand ourselves a little bit from the standpoint of having the port here and the port starting in that aspect there too. And they also funded a part of the, uh, Project Crafts, infrastructure project there too. But, uh, we are also working with PDR TA. Uh, we're trying to see, figure out if there's a need there. We had a meeting a week or so ago. Um, we're trying to figure out, you know, what needs are there from that standpoint there too. So we, we're trying to team up with, uh, with maybe Harbor Freight, some other industry people along with some local people to see if that project can go into. But, uh, I'll be here, glad to answer any questions y'all may have that, that y'all.
What about housing?
Housing. Housing and retail, I think are kinda somewhat tied together. Uh, we have, I, I, we've been talking with some retail, you know, some, what I call hotel motel type facilities. Um, and we are, you know, hoping to, as the industry comes in, we're hoping to see if we can get more and more. The fitting in what they're looking at is, we need a certain type of, of, of industry here. Um, and, and basically people that can support a business, or restaurants, those types, to be in here. So hopefully with the new industries coming in, we can get the numbers that will fit into there. Uh, we do reach out to the housing market. Uh, we have reached out to D.R. Horton a number of years ago. And then recently, we reach out to Pluton Homes, we reach out to different companies like that all the time. Let's see, um, I know with the two expansions that, that we're currently at right now, County Council's given one reading to one of, one of the projects for Project Craft, and we can get the other project first reading or second reading. I think we will hopefully be able to get a little bit more interest, you know, in this, particularly in this area here for the, for the, for the, at least the housing part of it, and then the water and sewer, I mean, and then, and then the, uh, uh, the hotel motel, and then retail, and restaurants, and stuff like that. The key is gonna be, can we get the water and sewer out to this part of the interstate, which is on the other side of the interstate? That's gonna be one of the challenges we're gonna have to deal with.
We got a million gallons out there now.
Yep, yep, so we've got a million gallons out there now. So, you know, that will help us, um, uh, as, as most of y'all know, nowadays, you gotta have the infrastructure there. I mean, it's not like it used to be, well, we'll build it and we'll come. Uh, unfortunately, the, the new approach is, it almost has to be there.
Be ready and I'll come.
Be ready and I'll come, because the problem that you have is, is the community that they're looking at, the infrastructure's already there. So when you compete with them, you know, you can't, you don't have much, much going on that too. But, uh, I, I think that, um, I think we're finally getting to the point where we can fit into that model. And that model of having, you know, sitting down, what I call sitting down restaurants, you know, which is, you know, those type of restaurants. And then the housing market is gonna be driven by the number of jobs that you have bringing in. And I look at, you know, look at that aspect there too.
Thank you, thank you, Clay.
Mike, appreciate it. Glad to answer your question.
You know, it'd be great, and you don't need to come to every meeting, maybe twice a year, you know?
I'd be, I'd be more than happy to come.
We just love to hear about progress, you know, so much is hearsay.
Like I said, I, I still wanna go back and say, I, I, y'all are a great partner with me. I mean, it really, it makes the transition for, industry would not be here today if it weren't for the commitment of the city of Dillon. I mean, while I'm in Gordon Harbor Freight, I could just get down the list for a year. It would not be here without the city of Dillon's commitment to make the turn.
We thank you, thank you for what you do. Um, and I'm, I'm a little, public hearing?
No, citizens report. You don't need to say anything. Any, anyone want to say anything?
Dr. Wallace, uh, council. I've noticed that we have a large, I guess, infestation of bats in our buildings. Doing this, in the downtown area. I was in one of the buildings that the city owned last week. And you can, once you walk in there, you can smell the, I don't know, the odor of feces or whatever. And you got city workers in there. I was in there for about twenty minutes and felt a little dizzy, nauseated. We might need to look at that situation.
We had that, not sure right now from there.
Correct.
Not to this church, we had, you know, about two years ago, we had a huge problem.
I don't know the, somebody know how we can get rid of it. I know that if you get rid of it, they're gonna come back sooner or later.
We got, we got access. Chief Lane's having his house, he got rid of, yeah.
Not, not my house, it's around here.
Okay.
Also, the, uh, in other areas, certain areas, we have a trees that is overgrown, old power lines and the Jacksonville area, the Pine Street area, the Newtown area. I don't know if it's city property or county property, uh, 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 state property. Where the trees, that's where mainly our problem come in, when we have a hurricane or something. Trees fall on the power line, power is lost.
Bert, is that, is that?
Well, if, you know, anything power line related, it'd have to be progress energy. And we're, we're not really trying to work around that kind.
So how does he make that?
Well, they come in.
Periodically.
They come in once, twice a year and trim in places. If we know there's one or two that's been a problem, we usually contact them, they've come in and.
Can we make that happen?
Yeah, if, you know, we'll give them a call, if you give me, afterward, give me some addresses. We'll call them, give them a look at.
Thank you.
Also, you spoke on the, uh, four or five hundred people that's coming in. This is where Clay come in, we need somewhere to house these people, instead of them going to Florence and other places. We need to keep that money here in Dillon. Also, uh, maybe this is a question for the code enforcers. Mobile food trucks, do we have a on-its on that? Or? Do we need to look at a on-its on that? Uh, several people are interested in mobile food trucks.
Yeah, that's becoming a hot topic in the PD area. In fact, I think the city of Florence just passed one last one for food trucks. City of Parkville just passed one not too long ago. And I think also Town of Charroa just passed one, so something we need to look into.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Now, public hearing.
And that's basically the same thing as citizen report. If anybody got anything to talk about or want to discuss from the public, the municipal budget, ordinance, or sanitation rates, or water and sewer rates. This is their time to, to get, to speak.
Okay. Anybody?
Do we have the actual figures of what the actual new bill we go to once the budget's passed?
Uh, property tax.
Well, I mean, the water bill, what, what's the water bill?
Gee, I had it in my letter, didn't I?
Yep, in his letter.
Let me go back and see.
Did he beat you two dollars now?
Well, I, it's, he gave the increase.
Yeah.
Uh, the five percent in sanitation would go up a dollar twenty-five per month. Uh, the five thousand a ga- a gallon of blunt fuse would go up a dollar thirty-five.
So that'd be, yeah, what we come, they didn't change from the pre this one, I don't remember.
I don't, I don't know if we ever came out with an actual.
Yeah, we did, or I did. Might have been in the budget meeting, let me look at my previous notes. And I can tell you. Where I thought I had it anyway. But it would've been, I'm gonna continue real quick in math. Twenty-six, roughly twenty-six for sanitation. Four for stormwater, which is thirty. And then, what is the, and what is the base rate for? I got it right here. The base rate for water is four dollars and ninety-four cents. Base rate for sewer is sixteen dollars eighty-seven cents, so thirty-six, forty. It comes up to about forty-two dollars, just, just to have our services.
That's, the four ninety is based on five thousand?
No, no, that's just, that's just a half, that's.
It was just a half.
That's not turning water on or flushing a commode, that's just, if you didn't turn any water on or flush commode, and you had our sewer service, water service, garbage, and stormwater, it's about, let's see, it's fourteen, that's twenty, another thirty, about fifty dollars, I'm sorry, I said forty-two, about fifty dollars.
So also, while we're talking about, you're raising the two meals and this.
Hold on, it's gonna be, I've been around a rug. We gotta get, it, we're not part of, part of the public hearing, that has to go into the ordinance. Once you go and do the, uh.
Talk about the ordinance.
Make a motion on the ordinance, that's the one we're gonna, we're right there, we're still in public hearing. I just, so I don't think there's anybody else that wants to speak on public hearing, if you wanna move on.
Okay. All right, let's go to the next item of business, ordinance nineteen dash oh-one, uh, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, this one. But, now, John.
You got it right here, you got, uh, for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, is that assessed value of a house?
Yes.
Okay. Um, you don't have anything as far as commercial buildings and the taxes they make, it won't affect that at all?
Yes, yes it will.
So you, you got it, what it would generate just for residential, you don't have the commercial one it would generate?
What, revenue?
Yeah.
Uh, all we did there was, the two, the two meals, the two meals itself equals about thirty-seven thousand dollars. And we get that number from the auditor upstairs. And a meal, a meal itself, based on the assets in the city, is roughly eighteen thousand per meal. So all you're doing there is adding those two meals to your property tax revenue, which roughly thirty-seven dollars.
But the way I'm reading it here, I just wanted to make myself understand. It says additional ten sixty-six a year on the house taxed at one thirty-five. It doesn't say anything about commercial buildings or anything.
No, that's just, that's on a residential.
Right.
That's on residential property.
What would you generate on the commercial?
He's trying to keep you on an idea.
I understand that.
That ten dollars is what it's gonna cost, the addition, ten dollars is what it's gonna cost a property owner who has a house with a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Right, I understand that.
Now, mind you, if you remember, when you look at your tax bill, you get deductions or credits. All right. That would be lower, because that doesn't have the credits in. That make sense?
Yeah.
Because when you, when you get your bill, and you look at it, and you see your, and I use the city taxes, you see a thousand dollars, but you may end up paying six hundred.
You might not have the answer to this, but how does it affect the home state?
I don't think it does. They, they still have to pay a percentage. But I don't think that the millage on that, let me see how, let's just use, they may have to pay seventy-five percent of whatever, or twenty-five percent of, of whatever the millage is. So if the millage goes up, you know, that twenty-five percent's gonna go up. That's the best answer I can give. Clay, you know about that?
You know, homesteads based on the value off, you know, off your property taxes, and the value comes off. If your rate goes up, then you pay based on the rate that goes up. So if you go up a meal too, that's what it is. If your house is a hundred thousand dollars, you get that deduction right off, so your assessed value goes down, and the millage goes.
It's based on that read adjust, adjusted assessed value.
Right, right. But you, but you, but if it's a homeowner, you get that school tax credit too. So really, it may not be that much.
Yep.
Can I get a motion? Make a motion, please. Except for not today, no. A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, ordinance nineteen dash oh-two, annexation of Robbie and Mason Lane property at sixteen twenty-seven Highway three oh-one. Uh, north Dillon.
That's Lane's baby tax.
Yeah.
Make a motion.
Get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good night. Um, next to ordinance nineteen dash oh-three, uh, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, sanitation rates, uh, the rate increase. Can I get a motion? Make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance nineteen dash oh-four, uh, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, water and sewage rate adjustment. That's the five percent increase.
Three percent increase.
Three?
Yes.
Uh, I'm sorry, I want to say. Uh, all, can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and we also had resolution on number.
This is under new business.
No, resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Resolved business. Resolution number zero-three dash one-nine, adopting Personnel Handbook. Can I get a motion?
I wanna ask you a question on that one.
Okay.
I wanna ask you, um, on page four, you approve all the hires, don't you, Glenn?
Yes.
Okay. Um, on page, uh, thirteen.
Thirteen?
Yep. Um, I wanna make sure I'm reading it right, 'cause you have to be here, if you, over, after ten years, you don't get any more vacation, am I, am I correct?
That, well, you increase, you can get three, three, three weeks after ten years, that's, that's the most.
How do you go about putting something in after twenty years, that, that employee can get another vacation?
We could, we can change it now.
I mean, long-term, you why, you got to look out for.
And we have.
Maybe fifteen years, I don't know.
And here's, here's another thing, and, and that's a good point. I met with, or invited every full-time employee, started in January, I believe it was, is that correct, Tim?
Yes, sir.
For lunch, once a week, and bringing four or five different employees. And just get feedback from them. And one of the things that, that they talked about, and what I was gonna talk with our department heads now that I'm finished with it, was, we have some employees that have accumulated over the years their vacation time. Where by policy, once you accumulate more than two hundred and forty hours, you lose.
I think that's what I was, you know, like.
You lose. Uh, so, you know, some of those have asked, can we sell them back? And that may be something we can look at, do. Now whether or not we want to add, once you got the twenty years, you know, and that, or fifteen years, if, if they're not using it, why do we wanna add to it?
Well, I understand that. Um, and that was another point I wanted to make, is right now, just for the employee, the two forty, and he don't use it, he loses his.
Within that next year, if he doesn't use it?
Within the next year. So I think we need to look at that on, on, you know, maybe compensate them where they don't lose it. Because some of them don't wanna take it all.
Or then again, they, they don't wanna take three weeks off.
Right.
You know, 'cause if they're, if they've been here that long, they're accumulating three weeks, which is what? Hundred and twenty hours, half of what they can, so, I mean, it gets to be, now, on the, on the other side of that, that is a liability to us, because if, if Benny leads. So, I mean, it gets to be, now, on the, on the other side of that, that is a liability to us, because if, if Benny leaves, we have to pay him whatever he, he's accumulated.
With a twenty-year employee, I think, you know, gave their time to the city of building. I think we, as the council, should look at, you know, giving another week's vacation at that, you know, whatever we decide to do. I just happened to look at the handbook, and I knew, going back to my job, it's after fifteen years, I get another week's vacation. So I just wanted to mention that while I was looking at the handbook.
Well, we have no problem.
Can we get a cost on how much that would be?
Well, it's gonna vary, it, it's gonna vary, because, you, how many we have at that, how many we have.
How many do you have right now?
Yeah, I don't know that number.
Well, that's what I'm saying, can you bring that number back? This is, this is where I'm going with, you know, um, I mean, last time I took a week-long vacation was two thousand five. And, and I'm not saying that they don't deserve it, but, um, um, I know how it impacts my business when I have twenty-year people out for a week.
Okay.
And, and they get, they're capped, mine are capped at three weeks. And, um, and it hurts when they're out, and it hurts the, the, the business side of it, and it is, you know, it's, it's expensive. Uh, there's, uh, there's other ways that you can do that, if people aren't doing it, you can do, uh, performance bonus, or you can do, uh, um, bonuses based on, we've got a longevity bonus.
But, you, and you could do a perform, 'cause here's, and I don't know the numbers, and, and I want to be with a big heart in that.
We're, we're talking about this like we got tons of money, we, we don't have tons of money.
No, what I'm saying is.
We're gonna have to add a few meals next year to, you know, to do this kind of thing.
We've got, we've got, we've got employees, and I don't know the numbers, but we've got employees that, if they earn a day today, they take it tomorrow. And then I have employees who.
Never take it.
Never take it. Um, so, you know, we can look at it and see whether we add another week after so many years, or give them an opportunity to sell it, whether it's at a hundred percent or a fifty percent.
Well, I would ask that we table it one more time.
Okay.
Let you bring some information back, as far as how many employees we have, and how it would impact the other employees, and then go from there. So I make a motion.
We couldn't accept it, like we haven't changed it.
You can, if you can.
Uh, I, I think if, if you're gonna make changes, we need to, because it's a resolution.
Okay.
Um, and it's just a guide, and we're, and it's just by, by, I guess by mandated law that every time there's a council change, you know, and it's more so council, when that new council comes on, they know about this. So you try to do it every two years, so I mean, that's, we can do that.
Table resolution zero-three dash.
And, and look at.
Make a note.
I make a motion, we table it.
And I have no issue with that.
Second that, or second?
We need a motion to table?
Yes.
Okay. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at the number of years and how many people we have that max salary.
Well, it'd be the financial limit, both of, giving them an extra week, paid them a dollar, or a hundred percent, or a fifty percent on the dollar.
That is correct.
All right. We'll have that for you in August. All right, new business, uh, resolution, uh, number oh-five dash one-nine, digital, uh, sign roll. Lighten us a little more on that, I think we.
Yeah, last month we talked about it, um, and, and when that resolution, what we're doing is allowing the city to have, let people rent space on our digital side, I mean, somebody, we, somebody, um, having a, um.
Anniversary.
Anniversary, you know, they, they wanna wish their wife or spouse a happy anniversary, um, if some kind of nonprofit doing something. Whether it's Methodist Mia, you know, doing a, a chicken bar, you know, we put it up there from non-profit. Yeah, that's, that's all it is.
Well, you can do the, uh, all the downtown stuff too, right?
Yeah, yeah. So this would be those that are not connected with the city, it could allow them to, and then it takes Tina, I don't know how long it takes her to do it, but I think she's got the master plan, but.
What's the cost, I mean, what kind of money we're talking?
Oh, we're not. To rent? It's on the back of the resume, it's, it's on the back, five dollars a day, you know, if it was in the newspaper, it'd be a whole lot more than that, just trying to get people to, another opportunity. And I, and I talked to him, and I, I talked to him, and I said, what's your thoughts on this? But that, that's.
You talked to Johnny, I got a big opinion about it.
Yeah, but I'm, but that's all it is. And, and, and to, if you put a price on it, so she don't be bombarded with everybody coming in, I want to do this on there, you know, at least we've got something to, to control it. That's basically it.
All right. Can you get a motion?
I make a motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And then the last thing is the accommodation tax disbursement that I brought up to you earlier.
That's recommendation from the committee that.
That's recommendation.
We pretty much.
One more thing while we're talking about the accommodation, what happens to the excess money that's not being used?
What?
You got ninety-two thousand dollars, man, and you only use them forty-two thousand.
We don't have ninety-two, we record it, if you look at one of those that's a recording, from last year, we recorded, when we get the money in in July, we record it back. So you just look at your checking account. That's an audit thing.
Okay, if you don't mind, Janet, explain it to me, I'm on, I'm on the phone.
Which, which one is that?
Is it ninety-two thousand dollars that current year to date, you've actually taken in?
Hold on, let me look.
And the, the committee members have given out forty-two thousand?
We have taken in ninety-two, yes.
Okay.
Which is, the, um, general fund gets the first twenty-five thousand, then five percent thereafter. Then the chamber gets thirty percent of that. Then the remaining is what the committee.
Distributes.
Distributes, their recommendation.
So the chamber's gonna get money, and the county fees will get money?
Well, the, the, chamber gets money, yeah, chamber, yeah, chamber gets money based on mandated by law.
Mandated by law.
Remember I put in your, in your packet also, the code for accommodation tax, and where it says thirty percent, that was under three, I believe it was, thirty percent of the balance must be allocated to a special fund and used on for advertising and promotion of tourism to develop and increase tourist attendance through the generation of publicity to manage and direct these expenditures. These tourism promotion funds, municipalities shall select one or more organizations such as the Chamber of Commerce, Visitor and/or Convention Bureau, or Regional Tourism Commission. So, I mean, and the chamber's the only thing we have here.
But it puts it in, it's on the fund there for the city.
And then what happens there is, we'll take, celebrate for money, anything that we spend on certain things to celebrate, mainly advertising and things of that nature, we turn that invoice over to the chamber, who then writes us a check for, checks numbered dollars. And that's where that comes from.
So with that being said, you think we can go back to the chamber this year and try to waive these fees for a nice Christmas parade?
I'm gonna work on that, remember you and I talked about that.
Uh, can I get a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, county number report, John?
Um, it's a new year, but, so I, I've been patient about asking this question. So I think it's time to dive into it and find out what we can do about it. Um, and Glenn knows, I talked to Glenn, these tournaments, we, um, we rent our fields out for these tournaments, for the, um, travel ball, and it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars per field, and we take in five hundred dollars flat fee. And over a two-day tournament, the individual who's taking in, who's doing the tournament can make fifteen thousand dollars, okay? Now they're using our lights, they're using our chow, they're using our facilities, use the bathroom. I mentioned it to Glenn, I'm gonna mention it to council, I think we need to raise them fees, and we also need to get stuff as far as the gate money, some money off the gate fee. Um, I just wanna bring it to you, Tina, to find out how other council members feel about it. Um, I just think they're just giving it away when they use our facilities.
Are we competitive with?
It varies from, from different locations.
And I can tell you how Florence does it, Florence does charge a fee of two hundred and fifty dollars, and they also charge two dollars per head, and it goes in and plays in the tournament.
I know we had valuable, but I'm there for the, obviously.
But we really need to change it, we need to.
I would, if, if we change it, I'd rather increase field rental, and not worry about the gate, because all this.
Yeah.
How do you know?
Yeah.
What's the, who's giving right numbers, I guess, if that makes sense?
You know, but I mean, I think you could have somebody, just like they do, when you go into the game, they got, I mean, just like we had our tournament out here, we had two city employees, I mean, why can't you have a city employee the day they have the tournaments, make sure that we get our cut?
I guess we could.
I mean, we're doing it now, when we run our own tournaments.
Yeah, when we do our own, that's correct.
I mean, so what would be the difference, I mean, you're losing a lot of money. I mean, especially when they go into these nighttime, and we have to run them lights out there, that's very costly. Another thing I wanna mention is the concessions stand. Uh, I think the city, I mean, for, right now, you can't, like we had a tournament this past week, why can't we bring the coolers into the, the complex? Can you tell me, Glenn?
Just to help with concessions?
But the concessions, we don't get anything from the concessions.
We get rental, yeah.
You don't get no rental. Um, in fact, that's pennies compared to the money you can make in the concessions. So, I mean, I really think, if you wanna look the business out, that's fine, but right now, we're getting nothing from our concessions. And that money could be helping to enhance our complex. The things I fight about every year, about why don't we do more things at the complex on, you know, upgrading, we're losing a lot of money. And we really need to look at trying to capture, you know, the money we're losing out of. We used to do it with the city employees, I don't never know what happened with that.
What's that?
We used to run our concessions.
We didn't make any money?
You've got to be making money.
We, we didn't back then.
We're making money now.
We didn't make any money, in fact, seemed like we lost money back when we did the first, I mean, early years.
We were making a ton of money, I know we wouldn't have left it.
Yeah, we didn't.
Well, we, I mean, it was never brought to the council to even make a discussion.
Well, we changed that for that.
No, it had them out there in the last six years, seven years, and we done away with it. I mean, even on the soccer end.
The last one, when we did it, the city itself, not city staff, but the city itself, we changed, we didn't do it maybe up to two thousand three or four, and then we started letting those that worked out there to run it and pay us a ground fee. So we wouldn't have to worry about collecting everything, or going to pick up stuff and things of that nature. But if that's what y'all wanna do.
I mean, I just think it's, it's our concessions stand, it's the city of buildings concessions stand, and we need to be running our own concessions stand, so we can do things to our part. I mean, that's just how I feel, like, they might have a different take on it.
Well, my only take is, is that we left it for a reason, and, and that's, that's as I remember, we were losing money, but, you know. Glenn, when we lose money again, we can.
Turn it back over to. What does the Quonis Club do with their concessions, when I was in it?
It was like seventy-thirty or something like that, sixty-forty.
Could entertain something in that area, maybe eight-twenty and.
Could, and, I mean. Or you can do what the county does, I think they bid theirs out and take the, the highest cost, you know, on what somebody said they gonna pay.
Right. But we also got to realize, when you put somebody in there, and they're not treating the customers correctly, it's not gonna be them that the people will walk away disgruntled, it's gonna be city of building. 'Cause they're not gonna know that, so we need to be careful, whoever's running it, they're running it the way we would like them to run it, and not just anybody, because they give a low figure also.
Yeah.
I mean, you know.
Well, it wouldn't be a low figure, you would go with a high figure.
I mean, a high figure, I mean, right, right.
But in a sense, it's different than what the county does, because you're out here from March all the way to October, so I mean, you know, it's being utilized a whole lot more.
Yeah, the county just really doing it during football season. Absolutely.
Oh.
That's true.
I also wanna, North Eastern Technical College had the STEM program this past week, that was an exceptional thing. I would like to see the city of building try to help sponsor some kids to go to that next year, um, it's very educational. Um, I just wanna throw that out there, maybe we can look at doing something for ten, fifteen kids, it bought them twenty-five dollars. Um, it was a very good thing. I wanna go back to, um, the building uptown, the one beside the Council Agent Building. Is there any way that we can speak, do you have any information on it?
I think, I don't, you haven't talked to Jack yet, have you? We, we think we have something, but I don't wanna talk about it right now. If that's, I'll, I'll tell you after.
All right.
Thank you, that's all I have.
All right.
Uh, the only thing, Bert, have you looked at anything with the debris? We talked about it last week, as far as the refrigerator's couches, hadn't really had enough time that they kinda put off.
I know, right after that meeting, I rode around and I looked, and it was pretty bad, with, like, big giant cardboard boxes out in some areas, and just, you know, stuff that could probably be broke down and kept a little neater anyway, and, uh.
We're getting ready to, you know, as all of you know, we're getting ready to have to get a new garbage truck. And, you know, our procedures are gonna change once, you know, we get this truck in operation, as far as some of the, you know, the way the cans are picked up, and where they're placed, and that kinda thing. We're gonna be putting tags on each, you know, homeowner's can, letting them know where and how to place their can out. Uh, the cans when we pick up by an automated truck, so there's only gonna be like one person operating the truck. And, you know, we're gonna have to limit the way we put stuff out, by the cans, have to start really more following our ordinance more closely. I mean, we have things in place, we just got to kinda be more strict on it.
And that will be, that will mainly just be the trash cans itself, so.
And on these tags, they're also gonna, you know, say something about yard debris. Um, we got a lot of, you know, people that put out yard debris, it's mixed trash, they put limbs and trash together, but can't, that cannot be done. I mean, you can't pick it up like that, and it has to be separated before it's going to the landfill, you can't put commercial or, or household trash with limbs and leaves. Has to be separated, and, uh, just things like that, we've got to enforce, and that, you know, we're gonna try to put all this in place, you know, starting August the fifth, is when we hope to roll the new truck out, and the biggest thing is you can, instead of, you know, the handle's got to be facing the house, so the truck can grab the can and dump it in like this. So the handle and the wheels will face the house. So that's gonna be the biggest challenge, you know, getting everybody to turn their can around the opposite way they're doing it now. Right now, they're placing it out where the, the worker can grab the handle and pull it to the truck. So, starting August the fifth, it's gonna have to be done the opposite way. But it's gonna be, you know, a learning procedure for everybody, and, uh, hopefully it'll work out good. But we're working on something about picking up the big stuff too.
That's all I have.
All right, um, before we go ahead and do that, before you leave, though, if y'all leave, you've got to sign this, these ordinance and this resolution. Uh, can I get a motion, go into executive session?
I make a motion.